Well, your timing is exceptional then. So at 6:03, I will gavel us into our first meeting of 2025. So welcome to Missoula City Council. Happy New Year, everyone. Nice to see you. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please join me. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that. We're going to double check sound real quick. Make sure folks don't have their mics on. Do we get it? Alrighty. You know, Counselor Campbell, I hear you. I forgot my computer. I had to go back and get it. It's two weeks out and, you know. We forget what we're doing. No. Well, thanks, everybody. And Ms. Trimble, we'll go ahead and do a roll call when you're ready.
All right. Beginning with Anderson. Absent. Vissera. Campbell. Carlino.
Present.
Farmer.
Present.
Present.
Jordan.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Nugent.
Present.
Absent this evening.
Cheryl.
Present.
Vesica. All right, we're good to go. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Great. So there were four sets of minutes submitted for the council packet. Do any council members have any questions or changes to those minutes? Not seeing any in the room or online. Then those minutes will remain as submitted. Thank you very much. The next is our committee schedule for this Wednesday, January 8th. And Ms. Trimble, do we have any changes to that committee schedule?
No changes that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right, great. We are scheduled for this Wednesday and back to regular business. Then, under special presentations and proclamations, we don't have any this evening. So no neighborhood council updates tonight, and we don't have any proclamations either. And then, looking forward to the meeting here, we have just one public hearing. And we'll go ahead and start with that. And then, of course, we have our typical business of consent agenda and such. So we will start with Ross Mullenhauer, who is here to present for Public Works and Mobility on the ordinances amending Missoula municipal codes Title III and 12. So Ross, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a second, let me just get this tech figured out here. All right, let me just share my screen. That might be easier than whatever's going on here. Wait. There we go. I see something. Okay, is everybody seeing my screen the way they should be seeing the screen? Okay. Make sure that technology hasn't changed on me since the end of 24, 2024 into 2025 here. All right, thanks, everybody. My name is Ross Mullenhauer. I am the city's engineering manager, and I'm here to present a public hearing, the proposed changes to our sidewalk assessment program. I already presented this once in December, so this should look pretty familiar to you. Let me see if I can get this to advance. There we go. Okay, the presentation I've got tonight is some background, why sidewalks, and then some specifics on our proposed code changes. I'm going to talk about the impacts those changes would have on our current projects and even a couple of previous projects, and then also the financial impacts to our city budgets by making those changes. And then, in response to what we heard last time and since then, we have two potential amendments to provide information on as well. And we can, as we get into them, you can correct me if I'm wrong procedurally, but I think I'm here to, procedurally, I think I'm here to present the public hearing items that we brought to you last time. And then, if council wants to make an amendment, they're welcome to do that. And then I'll take questions and discussion. Does that all sound good?
That sounds great.
Okay. So what got us here in the first place was that the mayor asked Public Works to recommend changes to the sidewalk assessment program. It would reduce the cost burden on individual property owners in line with the city's goals for equity and affordability. You definitely heard that there's a lot of discussion about code reform going on, and this is a more surgical thing that we're doing here. There's a larger code reform, which is looking at everything. And I provide the link if you're interested in that, but we're just talking about sidewalk assessment and how we fund our sidewalks with this presentation. Let's see. Also, when I presented the last time, it was before the vote on Eaton Street. I just wanted to be clear that the city council, in our last meeting, voted against ordering assessments on Eaton Street Phase 2. So some of my examples might not make as much sense right now, but just bear with me. Okay, so why sidewalks? I don't know if we really need to go into detail on this. Suffice it to say that we think sidewalks are an obvious benefit to communities. They have lots of benefits from health, safety, environment, and property values. We hear a lot from neighborhoods how they want more sidewalks and safer crossings, and our best way to do that is through our various tools, one of which is just to build a large sidewalk corridor project such as Eaton or Turner Warden, and we have to struggle with how to fund it. And sidewalks are not cheap, and we recognize that. So we use a bunch of tools, as you know, to fund our sidewalks, everything from Road District to Barca, to other funding sources, but we also rely on property assessments. And that's where the property owner adjacent to the property, to the sidewalk, to the street, pays a portion. And so the changes that we brought forward with those goals in mind are, the first one was to increase our deferrals by changing the eligibility requirements. We wanted to increase the threshold for income-qualified deferrals to 120%. Right now, it's at 80% of the AMI, so that would increase the number of applicants who would qualify for that. And we also wanted to decrease the threshold for high-assessment deferrals. And just so everybody's aware, right now, if you are on a street like Turner Warden or Eaton Street and you got an assessment, the most you would have to pay right now is $9,000. So we call anything above $6,000 right now is what we call a high assessment, and that's eligible for deferrals currently. This would lower that bar from $6,000 to $3,500. So more people would be able to take advantage of the deferrals, deferral option. So I know there's a lot of terms here. A deferral is basically when you say that you're not going to pay, the city will pay the costs upfront, and you will pay at the time your property sells. So whenever, however many years down the road that is, your property's been gaining value the whole time, and you, at that point, when you sell, will pay off the deferral. I'll keep going. Another change we were looking at making was to try to clarify our section on interest rates. It was a little confusing in the past, and we wanted to try to separate, separate, there's two different types of funding assistance we provide. Like I said, sometimes we provide financing. So if you need help with financing of the cost itself, this is not a deferral, this is just financing the project. The city offers a financing option, and we would wrap that into our bond rate. And so we want to make sure that the interest rate we're giving the property owner is in line with the bond rate that we're getting on the market. The city's goal is not to lose money. We're not trying to make money, we're just not trying to lose money. So we wanted to make sure those are kind of aligned. So that step number one, or point number one on the slide, is all about aligning it with the current bond rate. The point number two is more about the deferrals. In that case, we're not bonding that deferral cost, we are just delaying it, but we recognize that our money has value in our bank account, and there's an inflation to anybody's money. And so we want to make sure that we're accounting for the inflation over 15 years or whatever, however long, many years it is before you sell. So we would charge an interest rate on any deferred costs equal to the long-term inflation rate. And we would talk to our finance director and make sure that we're, whatever the long-term inflation rate is, is clearly defined and defendable. And finally, the last change was this postponement subsidy change. This one, a postponement is when you come to the city and say, "I'm working on a little project here. Do I really have to do sidewalks?" And we look at the property, and if there's good reasons not to do a sidewalk in that particular spot, maybe it's a dead-end street, maybe you're a mile from the nearest sidewalk currently, we would allow you to postpone it. And then, right now, we already have that postponement in place, but right now, we say that you would not be eligible for any subsidy if we came along in the future and did a project. And we just think that that's not really fair. I don't know how often that would actually happen, and if we're going to do a project, we just want to treat everybody the same and be able to apply postponements. Or sorry, be able to apply subsidy to these projects. So last time you guys asked me which projects these would apply to, these changes that we're pursuing right now would basically apply to Eaton Street if it goes forward, and then Ivy Franklin and Turner Warden. Those two projects are completed and fully constructed, but we haven't bonded them yet. So we still have an opportunity. If these changes are made today, we would go back and let the residents know their alternatives and options and show them that you can do a deferral here if you qualify, and make sure that they're aware of their options on these projects. Then I wanted to look at just a specific property owner impact. This is a house on Eaton Street. Eaton Street is on the right side of this, and I think it's central on the left. You can see it's a corner lot, and it's going to need a lot of sidewalk improvements. There's nothing there today. And so when we run this through our numbers and everything, we see that the total sidewalk here is going to cost about $40,000. And under our current program, the city's already picking up $31,000 of that $40,000. So the property owner here would be responsible for $9,000. With our current deferral program, like I said, they can choose to either pay that through the city financing, they could pay it immediately if they want, if they want, they can finance it over 20 years, or they can defer it. They can only defer $3,000 of that $9,000 right now, and they have to be income-eligible. So basically, I won't go into detail on the lower bullet points there, but that's, those are the changes I already mentioned. By changing the deferral program, you'd have more property owners eligible, and they'd be able to defer more of the costs. I was asked to explain what this looks like in terms of dollars per month, and I probably should have laid this out a little bit better. Basically, the top row is if you chose to just do financing, $9,000. Let's say you want to finance that. Right now, the bond rate is 7.5%, and so assuming that interest rate, there's your dollars per month on whatever term loan you wanted to pick. So if you spread it out over 20 years, you're looking at $73 a month to pay off $9,000 of improvements. The lower two rows, so they can admit Stacy Anderson. There we go. The, there you go. You're admitted. The lower two rows are an example of the deferral. So again, with a deferral, you still have to pay, you don't get to defer all the costs, you are just deferring the high-assessment costs. And so the first $3,500, you would finance, I'm assuming, and then you would, in this example, you would defer the remaining $5,500. And so, again, if you spread it out over 20 years, you're looking at $24 a month with the $6,000 coming due upon time of sale. Now for the impact on the city's projects, just looking at Eaton Street as a whole. This project is over $1 million. Like I said, we're drawing from lots of different funding sources, but the sidewalk assessment portion is $256,000, and that's spread out over 42 properties. With these changes, it's a little hard to know exactly what the impact would be, just because we don't know who's going to ask for the deferral, who's income-eligible. But I think we kind of estimated somewhere around $60,000 is what we were thinking that these changes, we would have to pull $60,000, let's say, out of Road District or Barca to make up for the changes in these deferrals by altering these deferral rules. And I do just want to point out, this is probably something you've realized a long ago, but every time, as we make changes to these deferral programs and the sidewalk programs, it is important to realize that we're taking, we're saving money from the property owner, we're making it easier for them, but we're also putting more of a burden on our other funding sources. And so when, I know everybody here struggles with how to pay for a new sweeper for Brian's Cruise or something like that, and how to, when it's budget season, and it's just, it makes it, everything gets that much harder the more money we try to draw down from Road District or Barca. So there's a cost to making these changes. I'm trying to clearly show the alternatives to council, what those costs are, and then let you wise people make the decision. So with that, there's the motion for the items that I brought, and if it's okay with everybody, I'm going to keep going into the potential amendments.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So the first potential amendment was brought forward by council member Vesica, and she just asked whether, what would be the impacts of lowering our maximum assessment amount on single and two-family homes from $9,000, like I mentioned earlier, to a lower bar of $3,500? What would that take, and what would be the impacts on our projects? This is a graphic, I know it's hard to see, of our current funding structure, and it's basically a bar that, as you go to the right, as the cost of your assessment or your prop, the sidewalk on your parcel goes up, this is the funding formula. And there's an entire resolution, city resolution, that establishes exactly how this works. Basically, everything in the red box would go away with council member Vesica's proposal. We would limit the, basically, the city would pay up to $1,000. The first $1,000 would be paid entirely by the city. And then, from $1,000 to $8,000, the city and the property owner would share the cost with the maximum amount for the property owner equal to $3,500. As far as how that would affect our city projects, this shows the three projects I've mentioned, and the first column is basically how we're operating today. Those are the total assessment amounts that we've collected or we're planning to collect on these three projects, 342 on Turner Warden, 164 on Ivy Franklin, and 256 on Eaton. If this change happens, this is how much we'd be collecting on each of these projects, and then the difference. And you might be asking yourself, "Why is it so small? Like, there's no difference at all on Turner Warden." And that's because there really wasn't that many high-assessment properties on Turner Warden. High-assessment, I should caveat that, there wasn't very many single-family and double-family high-assessment properties on Turner Warden. There are still lots, Turner Warden, its total, the 342, is so high because there's lots of large parcels, they're cemetery, or parks department, or multifamily, or commercial. And so there's lots of those kind of properties, and so that's where, that's the burden right there. Those are the properties that are paying that 342. There's not, there wasn't a ton of burden on, I mean, there wasn't as much, let's say, as the other projects, as Eaton Phase 2 or on Turner Warden. So this kind of shows the totals of how it'd be, impact our three most recent projects. I think on Ivy Franklin, there was one house that was over that $3,500 bar, so there would be one house that would be affected on Ivy Franklin, and then several on Eaton Street. If council wants to move forward with this, the current funding formula is not actually in code, it's in a resolution 8416, and I believe we would need a new resolution to modify the old resolution. Once staff gets some direction on that, we could then start working on revising our software that we use to account for the property owner payments and sidewalk costs. And then we'd identify the properties affected by these changes. Like I said, there was none on Turner Warden, there was one on Ivy Franklin, and Eaton Street hasn't been finished yet. And we'd go back and we'd make sure that those properties were accounted for correctly. I'm going to keep going, if that's okay. This is the second amendment that came to us since I last presented, and that's the idea of using our deferral program for hazardous sidewalks. And so this is a little different. This isn't us ordering a sidewalk. This is more of a, almost like a code compliance issue, that when somebody in the public says, "Hey, there's an unsafe sidewalk here," they call us, and we go out and look at it. And this, what you're seeing on the screen, is a good example of one that just came to our attention. And if it's a really bad sidewalk that is a hazardous sidewalk, we would direct the property owner to fix it, and that can be expensive. I think in this case, it's like $13,000 of sidewalk that might need to get fixed. We're always looking for better engineering solutions. I wish we could have a better engineering solution for this, and I'm pursuing one right now with a new company that has a foam jacking technology, where they inject foam under the sidewalk and can lift it up. So we're exploring ways to be smarter about this, but at the end of the day, that technology won't work everywhere, and there's still going to be some sidewalks that have to get fixed. And so who pays for those? How does someone, let's say, on a fixed income, afford to do a $13,000 sidewalk project? So one idea is that we could expand our deferral program. It would just take one extra line in our code to kind of open the door for this, and we could start deferring the cost. So in this example, this property owner could take that $13,000 bill, we would pay the bill, and we would get our money back when the house sells. So it's kind of like a lien on the property. The financial impacts of this, it's a little bit hard to quantify. Again, we don't know how many people are going to want to use the deferral program, but our best guess is that this would kind of be impactful. This is probably, we're probably looking at $100,000 a year, based on how many hazardous sidewalk letters we're sending, who might apply, what the average cost is of a typical sidewalk repair. And this would have to come from Road District. Again, so there is a cost to this. This is less money that we'll have for other things, and so it's a trade-off. Here's the language that we would need to insert, and I know because we're kind of, this public meeting was about this section of code, it seemed appropriate to bring it to this public hearing, and I have this discussion here, especially on amendment number two. And that's my presentation. Thanks.
All right. Ross, thank you very much. Thanks for your presentation on the original proposed changes to the ordinance, and then we know of a couple of amendments that will be up for consideration here next. So let's move to council questions before we hear the motion on the floor, before we can actually formally take the amendments. So I see Counselor Carlino's hand raised.
Thanks.
You bet.
Yeah, I just had a question about the financing with interest. Do we have the numbers for how much people would pay if they, you know, wanted to pay the $9,000 over 20 years? Like, what is that total number with interest included? And then what would it be for the, if we capped it at $3,500 and somebody paid it over 20 years?
I think I showed that on that one graphic. You're saying if they chose to use financing for the $9,000?
Yes.
For 20 years?
Yeah, so what would the total cost?
Let me just get back to my... If they had a $9,000 bill and they chose to pay it, they chose to use city financing and paid it over a 20-year term, they'd be looking at $73 a month at current bond rates of 7.5%. And then, yeah, sorry, you got that on your screen still, these numbers? And then if they chose to defer it with the proposed changes, they'd be looking at $24 a month plus the $6,000 at the time of sale.
So just to clarify, that adds up to $17,520 for the $9,000? $73 a month?
I'm sorry, I'm not following your math. You're saying $73 a month times 20 years?
Yeah.
If you got the calculator in front of you?
Yeah.
Go with your numbers, yeah?
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify that it does almost double. People could potentially pay up to $17,520 if they finance it over 20 years, and then I just wanted to clarify that.
That, part of that is due, right, to the cost of money, the current, the bond rate. Our bond attorneys are telling us that the bond rate today is a 7%. So if interest rates were lower, that would be lower.
Right. Okay, thank you. Counselor Vesica?
Thank you. I have two questions regarding the second amendment that you discussed. About how many hazardous sidewalk letters does a city send out per year? I know it's probably different per year, but if you have a rough estimate?
Yeah, sure. It's about 25 letters a year currently.
Okay, thank you. And then, I'm not bringing it forward now because I can't, but regarding my amendment, I was wondering the, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to Ross for putting all the work into that. I really appreciate it. And then, logistically, bringing that forward, if it does pass, will I have to bring forward another referral and resolution change to change all of that? Or I guess we can cross that bridge when we go there. But am I technically allowed to bring that amendment forward tonight, since it is a resolution change?
That is an excellent question. You know, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mullenhauer, I'll ask Ryan Sudbury, who's online here, to answer that question for us.
Yes, you can put it in the code. The big difference will be how, if you want to amend it in the future, amending a resolution is obviously easier than amending the code. But if you want to change it tonight, you could amend it and add a provision to this code. It might just be easier in the long run to bring a new resolution. You could get that done before the ordinance is effective anyway.
I guess which would be smoother and more set in stone?
Well, if it's in code, it's, you know, arguably more set in stone. The problem is, in the future, if you want to change, you know, if you want to increase or decrease the thresholds, you have to go through the ordinance amendment or code amendment process, which, you know, as you know, is a little bit, is a little bit more involved. But it's, you know, it's not that much more work, and it would only likely need to be changed every few years as the inflation adjusts to the value of money and that kind of things.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm all finished. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor Davis, and thanks for the presentation, Ross. Question's about the second amendment. The last slide in your presentation said income-eligible homeowners, and I'm, maybe I missed it, but I just want to clarify that that is at 80 or 120% AMI for the income-qualified.
It's at 80% today in our rules, and the proposed changes that this public hearing is about would change that to 120.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
All right, excellent. You bet. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, ma'am, Mayor. Thanks, Ross, for the presentation. Going back to hazardous sidewalks, I'm just curious, the notices you put out, does that come about by and large complaints, or are you going out and inspecting? And then, the second part of that would be, what sort of criteria? I'm just curious what criteria you use as far as, you know, we've shown some obvious examples of mismatch of different sections, but is there criteria? I mean, if it was just a little bit less, would it pass?
Yeah, that's a really tricky question, in that we get our, we generate our, we follow up on any one that the public tells us about. So if someone, we get a complaint from the public, we follow up on it. And then as far as, if we are on a site and we're there to, let's say, do a water main project, we're focusing on the water main project. We're not necessarily seeing everything, but we, if we see something that's a really extreme hazard, then we are sometimes adding it to our list. We're not going out looking for these, but we're also not trying to ignore them. So there are some on the list now. Our list has started to grow a little bit as our surface Our list has started to grow a little bit as our surface engineering staff have gone out there and, and seen some of these sites that are just right in their face. And, and we feel like it's our responsibility to, to add, to act on those if we see them. So that's kind of where the list is coming from, mostly some citizens and some self-reporting. But we're, we're not going out necessarily trying to find them. We're just seeing them in the course of our duties.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Councilor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Forgive me if I missed this on the hazardous sidewalks, which I, first of all, I appreciate the staff coming up with maybe another alternative solution to that, because I know that that's actually a pretty big burden on homeowners as well. And not having any programs to work with is something that I've run into with my constituents. Was I correct in understanding that the only options on that would be either they pay it all upfront on their own or a deferral? There's no payment plan on that?
No, no, I think, Monty Sype, if you're listening, which I think you are, I think you can confirm this, but I believe that they can take advantage of city financing.
So they could also do the city financing? Okay. I just wanted to verify that, because if not, I think that, I was going to ask why, but if they can, that's great.
Is Mr. Sype coming through? Or no, are you satisfied, Councilor Nugent, on that?
I can follow up if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, you bet. All right. Councilor Jordan?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I just have a quick clarification question. I was reading something while you were covering slide 12. And I just noticed that there's an interest rate on slide 12 that is 3.5%, which is different than what the other interest rates could be. Is it slide 12? Maybe it's slide 11. Yeah, so, you know, there's city financing, yeah, sorry, it's 11.
The big blue arrow?
Yeah, it's slide 11.
All right, thanks.
So yeah, some of the financing is 7.5% and then for the bottom right is 3.5%. Can you explain the difference and why?
Yeah, sorry, that comes back to, if you still see my screen, let me go back to this interest rate page. Like I said, there's really, there's two instances where we, there's two different situations. One is if it's a bonded project, we're going to apply the bond rate plus 0.5%. But the deferrals, which was where you're seeing the 3.5, deferrals, we're not bonding anything on that. We're just saying, you just, just wait. It's, let's say it's a $10,000, no, sorry, not $10,000. I say it's, you're deferring $5,000 on your sidewalk order. That $5,000, you're not making any payments on that, so we can't bond it. So instead, that $5,000 is just, we paid it. And then maybe 10, maybe 15 years go by and, and you have to pay us back when you sell the house. But do you just pay us $5,000 back and then we kind of lose on the value of money over 15 years? Or, like I said, we're not trying to lose money. We're just trying, so the 3.5%, I think is when I asked our finance director what the current long-term interest rate was. She said go with 3.5% today, if we were doing one today.
So it's subject to change?
Yeah, subject to change, yeah.
Thank you.
And we don't want to lock it into code with a certain number and then have to change it in two years when there's a different interest rate picture.
Sure, you bet.
Thank you. One other question I have, I am very interested in ensuring that lien order is written down somewhere. So if somebody does get a lien against their home and they need to do HELOC, you know, home equity loan, that they will be able to do that, that the lien will become secondary so that they can have a primary lien. Is that written down anywhere?
I'm trying to remember our conversation from the last presentation. I thought, I thought Lee Griffin said that, I have to check.
No, she did say it would happen, but I'm just wondering if it's been written down anywhere. I just want to make sure that that's kind of codified in writing.
No, it has not been written down in the code, in the proposed changes to code.
Okay.
Maybe I could have, Mr. Sudbury, could you speak to the, what is, I think what Councilor Jordan is speaking to is the assurance that homeowners would have that the deferral, any lien on the property would be secondary or would be, you know, secondary to primary financing?
Thank you. Subordinate. He is...
Yeah, so...
Subordinate.
There would effectively be three different ways that you could do that. You could add it to this code as an amendment. You could add it to a resolution. It might also incorporate some of the changes that Councilor Vasika is thinking about. Or you could also have an administrative rule, like a sort of mayor's administrative rule concerning how this is addressed. But, you know, that would be subject to change with any change in the administration. So it's not, that wouldn't be as set in stone as the other options. But that'd be the sort of three avenues you could go to achieve that sort of seed in writing kind of thing.
I see Mr. Bickles raise his hand. Thank you, Ryan. Dale?
I want to raise the notion, you know, typically, you know, when we're issuing these type of assessment bonds, there are very particular kind of criteria that the market is looking at when they are assessing these things and whether they're, you know, how they're determining the marketability. And I don't know off the top of my head whether these are subordinate or not, and if they were actually subordinate, how the market would look at that. I mean, so we could actually make a decision today that we're going to say they're subordinate. And that might crank the interest rate up on it, because there's going to be, there'll be a different perceived risk related to these on the bond. So I just wanted to, before we try to do those things, there is, there is going to be a market, a potential market impact on the bonds. And that could change the interest rate if they are typically government bonds that are, these are property are first in line. And, yeah, they're liens. And so that, but if they're, if the council makes something secondary, that's going to affect the interest rate on that people are paying and it's going to raise it. So we just got, before we did that, we really want to check in with our bond council and those type of things, so.
Okay. Great. Just a quick comment real quick.
Sure.
Yeah, that just seems like something that we need to really think about, because when people need to dip into their home equity, they should be able to do so easily. And I would hate to have something on our books that prevents people from accessing their equity really easily. So that will be something I would like to follow up and see if we can get some language written down.
Yeah, I think we can most definitely follow up on that. I don't know that it would preclude a vote tonight from any of the business, but we absolutely can follow up on that. You bet.
Thanks.
You bet. All right, Councilor Sheryl?
Thanks. So Sandy's amendment, the first one, did, and maybe I missed this when you were going through it, but did we say where that money was going to come from? Or is it just going to be?
It would, it would come from Road District, I imagine.
Just come from Road District.
In order to fund those projects.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think the most straightforward way on this, Sandy, would be to change the resolution, because I realize the set in stone part you like, but also times change and we may, we may not want this, we may want it in a resolution that we can change later on. So to me, I would, if you would consider doing it as a resolution, it's something that I would certainly consider supporting and that I think we could probably see reasonably quickly. I'm looking at the Chair of Public Works. But that would be my preference and I understand your reasoning for this, Sandy, and I would definitely be more likely to support it if, if you would be willing to do it as a resolution change, a resolution change.
Come back to that. Councilor Becerra?
Thank you. I think Ms. Sheryl spoke to what I wanted to ask and comment on. But Ross, could you, I know we have very limited funding sources for subsidizing sidewalks. And, you know, anytime that we talk about subsidizing further, that means that we're taking more funds out of the Road District or any other funding source. So could you kind of paint the picture for what we're talking about here in terms of what, what, what does that mean? Are we, does that mean that we do less sidewalks? Does it mean that we don't do certain projects that might be on our CIP list? Because we don't have an increasing, a rate of increase for our Road District, right?
Yeah, I think you're exactly right, that it's a slow reduction in the amount of sidewalks that we will get done. And it's probably, you know, Eaton Street, the assessments were about 16% of the project. And so I guess you could continue to do the same projects, but 16% less on that, you know, and it depends on the project, like Turner Warden had a higher percentage. But yeah, I think in the end, it's, it's, there's, Road District is used for so many things, whether it's Brian's street maintenance or sidewalk projects or finding a local, local match on some larger projects. And so I think it's just probably less that we would have to work with if we reduce this too far.
Yeah. Quick comment?
Yeah, please.
So, you know, with Ms. Vasika's amendment, I just, I think we really have to think about what we are prioritizing, where the money is going to come from, what that means in terms of future CIP projects that we might have. And that merits a discussion, I think, and some more information. So I am not prepared to vote on something like that, because I think it's not a, that level of subsidy is not sustainable for our Road District funding. So I do think that we need to have a more thorough conversation and have council really get behind the idea that we are looking at potentially doing significantly less sidewalk projects or, you know, reducing the number of projects that we do in other aspects of transportation in the city if we're going to continue to tap into Road District funds. So, yeah, I just wanted to put, to put that out there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now, Mr. Bickle, you have your hand raised still, but are you all ready to go? Okay, great. And Councilor Nugent?
Thanks. Actually, Mr. Bickle, you can turn your microphone off. A question for you. Are there any other programs outside of the sidewalk program where we bond things for citizens or property owners and they owe us money? Or is that all in this program? I can't think of anything else, but I figured you would know better than I.
Dale Bickle, yeah, there are, I call it similar examples, and they're not really programmatic, I would say. The thing that comes to mind for me is the, like the Hillview Way project. So that was an example where council created like a special development fee district. And so city paid for those districts, you know, and Road District paid for those. And then the assessment, and then as development occurs, that special impact fee is coming up and is reimbursing, going back into the Road District to essentially reimburse that. Something similar. We did something similar in the, in the, some of the Lower Rattlesnake improvements. So those are, where money was fronted by the city and then was paid back in a different fee like this.
With a plan, but I mean, I don't know if that's even...
But there's still, but there's, but, you know, this is an example, and those are examples too, where the payback is long enough that we can't, you know, we're using current resources to pay for those. And it's a, and it's a long-term kind of unpredictable payback. So we can't really like recognize that, you know, we recognize we're going to get the funding at some point, but we can't really budget against it, right? So it's only, we're only going to be able to use it in the Road District, once again, when that's repaid, when we receive it, that's hard to predict. So we have to really think of it as a current budget resource.
And we don't have any program on like helping people sewer connections or waterline connections or anything like that?
Well, we do have the new Waterline Replacement Service Line program that was just initiated this year. You probably have more information on that than I do, but it is something that we're assisting homeowners with.
Yeah, that's correct. We do have a waterline loan program. I'm not, I can't remember the specifics.
Yeah, not a, it's not a deferral program. But it's not the same.
Right. Right, right.
What I was getting at is more of just if there were other things, because the last time Ms. Jordan brought this up, I liked it, and I do now. I was just thinking, if the subordinating, what this people owe the city on things, if that needed to be outside of just the sidewalk program or not? If it was more of just a resolution that basically stated the city would subordinate to other equity lines or mortgages? But probably getting in the weeds quite a bit for this moment, so.
All right, thank you. Councilor Becerra?
I just wanted to say that I am fully supportive of amendment number two. And my reasoning is that I think that this will help property owners who might have hazardous sidewalk in front of their, their property more likely to take care of it, because there'll be more financial support for them. And that overall improves the quality of our network for the entire community, from the mailman who needs to walk on that sidewalk and deliver your, your mail to a young mother. So I definitely think that that is a really good use of our Road District funds to help subsidize something that is a public health and safety concern and something that I think could incentivize or could motivate or just play, make it easier for people who need to spend that money on fixing a sidewalk.
All right, great. Thank you. So we're having sort of a revised public hearing this evening, because it's sort of a mix of the amendment process. But we have heard the, what is currently been referred in the council packet. So we have staff presentation. We've heard questions and some comments from council. We also have a preview of what those amendments are. My understanding of our process is I'll bring us back to hear the main motion. If I could, if we get the main motion on the floor, and then we can hold public comment on the public hearing and welcome comments both for the amendments as well. I think that's totally acceptable. But if that's okay, Chair Becerra?
And Ross, the current motion that we have on the agenda does not include amendment number two, correct? Okay, so I move that we approve ordinance amending Missoula Municipal Code Title III and Title Revenue and Finance Title XII and Title Streets Sidewalks in Public Places to update sidewalk deferral program eligibility requirements to be effective on February 5th of 2025. And I also move that we modify MMC 316010 with the following language. Income-eligible property owners who have received formal notification of a hazardous sidewalk from the city are also eligible for the loan program.
Okay. And so Chair Becerra, you've taken that as a friendly amendment? So the whole motion is now amended to include number two? Okay, so the full amended motion is on the floor. And I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment, see if there's any members of the public that would like to make comment. Okay. All right. And how about online? Is there anybody online that wishes to make public comment? I see a hand raised here. Mary S., if you can unmute from your side?
Sure. I, I understand I kind of came late, because I didn't realize there was a hearing in December about this. But I have a really hard time understanding the logic of waiting until a property sells. And maybe use that term loosely, but sells usually means, you know, usually means something different than a transfer. And so I am concerned that there will be an indefinite postponement of when these bills will actually come due. Inheritance, transfers to revocable trusts, all those other things are going to be ways to avoid basically paying that. And, and you mentioned equity and needing to get HELOCs out of the equity. That would be another way of, you know, if they have the money to pull, pull equity out of their house, they should be paying their bills. And so, you know, making the lien second is fairly unwise. But the other problem beyond the economic incentives to not sell your house, which will sort of gridlock the, the real estate community, you're, you're going to divide the community into the people who have skin in the game and people who don't care. You know, they're going to get the free sidewalk for the next 40 years and then, you know, sell the house when they die. So you'll have, you know, one family whose $10 over the income will have to pay $9,000. And then the next family over who qualifies can, you know, defer it pretty much indefinitely for, and enjoy the benefits of it without ever contributing to it. And that's going to create conflict within the, you, you won't have, you don't have the same goals. One goal, the family, you know, and people can use, choose to use what they want their money for. But here the city is saying, well, you know, we think Family A needs to pay for the full sidewalk assessment, but Family B doesn't ever need to pay. And that seems like it's a really perverse incentive when you're trying to create a cohesive community, because you are setting the incentives up. Who's going to want the sidewalk versus who's going to not want the sidewalk is going to come down to... is going to come down to, to how many people have to pay and how many people get it for free. And, and every time you sneak in these, some people have to pay and some people don't, it undermines the trust that you're acting for the benefit of the whole community. In, in fact, when you're just sort of saying, well, we're going to favor this group of people with all of these financial incentives, but not this other group of people because you've made some kind of moral judgment that they can suck it up and pay. And then the last one is climate change. I'm not sure that we want to keep promoting a 1950s-based model of suburbia with lots of impervious surfaces. And maybe that model itself also needs to be rethought, although that's not particularly what the ordinance is about. So those were my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. Anybody else online wishing to make public comment? Not seeing any hands raised. Okay. So that wraps up our public comment on the proposed motion that's on the floor. And so we'll bring this back to council deliberations. And so Counselor Vasika, turn it over to you.
Thanks. Um, I, I know that some of my colleagues are uncomfortable with me bringing this amendment forward tonight, but I, I believe that some of my colleagues are comfortable with it. So, um, I would like to bring my amendment forward tonight, and then if it doesn't pass and it warrants more discussion later, then I would be happy to bring it forward as a separate referral. I just want to see how it goes tonight. So I would like to officially bring that amendment forward.
Okay, that sounds great. So we do have that amendment, amendment language in your slideshow. Is that right? No? Did, Counselor Vasika, did you send that to the city clerk? Did you send that to Claire by chance?
No, I did not.
Okay.
It is in the slideshow, though.
It was, I, I believe we did have a summary in the slideshow. We'll just take a minute to go ahead and bring that up on screen, just so we're clear what the amendment is. If that's okay, Ross, I think.
Yeah, no problem.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't prepare amendment language for this one, just because it's, to me, it wasn't a code change. I wasn't sure which way council wanted to go, so I didn't know what section of code we'd be putting it in or what. My understanding is that the current subsidy, the formulas for how much subsidy people get is, is all in Resolution 8416. And so I think your amendment would need to say something about either adding new language into code, like Ryan Sedbury suggested, or modifying Resolution 8416 with a new resolution. I'm not, I'm not sure which direction Councilmember was saying.
Okay, um, you know, I've seen that this is only half baked right now. I will discuss with Ryan, and I'll just bring it forward. I retract, I guess I take that back. I retract that amendment that I'm going to bring forward. No longer going to do that. I'm just going to talk with Ryan off at a separate date. We'll get it all figured out. I'll bring forward a referral, and then we'll just have a better discussion about it during committee.
Okay, that sounds great. I do, I do see Ryan has his hand up. Mr. Sedbury, do you want to add to the conversation?
Yeah, just the one thing I was, I wanted to contribute there was the one thing you could do would be to add or modify the effective date of the ordinance so that you had enough time to bring the resolution forward. Typically, an ordinance is effective 30 days after adoption. You could say, you know, this ordinance is effective 45 or 60 days, and that gives staff time to work with Counselor Vasika to come up with that proposed resolution and get it scheduled on the committee and it come to a final Monday night meeting. So just food for thought.
We do, yeah. Right. Yeah, I appreciate that option. Thank you. And, and so my understanding is what's included in the resolution is basically the funding formula between the different sources of funds, and assessments are one of those. So it gives us the opportunity to look at, you know, the Barca funding, the road district, and the, and the assessments. It does allow for there to be flexibility, and if Counselor Vasika, you're willing to postpone the resolution consideration and bring that back, I think it might be the cleanest way, since we don't necessarily have the language proposed for the ordinance section tonight. And so I appreciate.
Yeah, I would rather have it be fully baked before I bring it forward. So my apologies, and I'll just, I'll, I'll wait to bring it forward.
No worries, no worries. I appreciate your flexibility, and also, Mr. Sedbury, you thinking through ways to, to make it work, but that sounds good. Okay. All right. Additional council deliberation, Counselor Carlino?
Thanks. Yeah, I think, you know, sidewalks are public infrastructure and publicly owned, and I think the government should pay the entire cost of sidewalks, and I think we only consider it a subsidy just because we live in such a car-centric society to where we think we're subsidizing this public infrastructure that's walking. We certainly wouldn't do that for streets. And with these changes, I know we're going to be taking more money out of the road district or Barca, but I think as a council, we could just decide to add more money onto sidewalks when we go through the budgeting session. I've certainly tried that before, and we've gotten up to, I think, four votes a couple of years ago to increase that. So I hope we look into that this year. We, we don't have to decide better funding formula or less sidewalks. We could do both, certainly build more sidewalks and decide as a council. We have that authority. So I'm happy to bring up an amendment to increase the sidewalk funding, and I think these changes that staff brought forward are, are really good and helpful. And I think it'll help a lot of people that are struggling to finance this public infrastructure for us with the deferrals and things. So I hope we pass these, and I hope that we increase the sidewalk formula. And also, I'm happy to bring back the resolution that we brought up last year to have the city fully fund them and rights away. You know, and I guess lastly, oh yeah, lastly, I just, I'm comfortable with the amendment that Councilwoman Vasika brought forward to cap it at 3,500. So whenever that comes up, I'm happy to do that, or just have the city cover the entire cost of this public infrastructure. But I think it's really important that we keep building more sidewalks. So now that we're going to have less money for them, we need to make up the difference when it comes to budget time.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Counselor Carlino. Any other council comments or questions, any other deliberations this evening? Not seeing any here, not seeing any in the room. Any online? Not seeing any hands raised. All right. So then we have an amended motion on the floor, been accepted as the final motion. And so I do believe we are ready for a roll call vote on this item. Ms. Trimble?
All right. Beginning our roll call vote with Becerra?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Trimble, for noting that Counselor Anderson was here. I meant to note that for the record, but you caught that already. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, folks, that wraps up that presentation. I also want to thank Ross, Monty, the team, for all the hard work related to this program. It's an important program. It's certainly a challenge to continue to figure out how we're building sidewalks, an expensive and important amenity in our built-out environment. And we're going to continue to work on this, to figure out ways that we can continue to do this as effectively as possible. And again, just very much appreciate all the work that you put into this and other things. Thank you, Ross. All right. Okay, that wraps up our public hearing. We don't have any new business tonight, but I do want to mention that going forward, that is typically where the legislative updates are provided. And there is, I think we'll make a recommendation and we'll work with council leadership on where you'd like this placed in the agenda. But new business has tended to be the, the spot. We don't have any updates today. It's the first day of the legislative session. And Jessica Miller, who is on staff with the city, is our point of contact, your point of contact, in whom we'll be tracking various bills associated with our priorities, but also anything that is more or less municipally related. So we can look forward to opportunities there. But I do want to mention both for council and members of the public that information related to the legislative session and, and bills germane to the city are located on our homepage under Spotlight. Just highlighted that item there. So just scroll down on the city's homepage, and you'll see a picture of the Capitol there. You can click on there and see what we might be tracking, or ways that you can engage with the legislature. So that's one thing that the pandemic brought to all of us is remote meetings. Members of the public can participate in the legislative hearings without driving to Helena. But there is a process by which you need to register. And so if you have any questions on that, you're, we're, we're more than, more than happy to help answer that, to help you testify. All right. So that's just the item I wanted to mention under new business. And then we'll go ahead and we have our consent agenda this evening. And then as far as regular business, we don't have anything other than the informational reports, which are administratively approved reports are provided every council meeting. The additional item under there is the Missoula City Council meeting schedule for 2025. So that's provided just for informational purposes. So I will take public comment on the rest of the agenda, which is the consent agenda. And really, there's no regular business other than the committee's schedule, or excuse me, the council's schedule. So with that, Ms. Trimble, if you'll go ahead and read the consent agenda first before we open up that item to public comment.
All right. This evening's consent agenda, we missed a few Mondays, so we have quite a few counts payable. We have a motion to ratify accounts payable or claims for checks dated December 24th, 2024 in the amount of $3,384,561.46. We have a second motion to ratify accounts payable for checks dated December 31st, 2024 in the amount of $793,491.35. And finally, a motion to approve accounts payable for checks dated December or January 7th, 2025 in the amount of $803,168.72. We have a motion to appoint Jamie Brydenbach to a regular member position on the Food Policy Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025 and ending on December 31st, December 31st, 2027. We have a motion reappointing Virginia Harris to the alternate two-member position on the Food Policy Advisory Board with a term beginning January 1st, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2027. We have a motion reappointing Ari Cornelius to a regular member position on the Local Emergency Planning Committee with a term beginning January 1st, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2026. We have a motion confirming the mayor's reapportment, reappointment of Tun Pham to the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025 and expiring on December 31st, 2026. We have a motion to adopt a resolution of intent to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Missoula Traps 1, 3, 6, and 13 of Certificate of Survey Number 6982 and Tracts 2A, 4A, 5A, 7A, through 12A of Certificate of Survey Number 6995 and adjacent right-of-ways, all in Sections 8 and 9 of Township 13 North Range 19 West, Missoula County, Montana, PMM, as shown in Exhibit A, and zone the property M1-2 Limited Industrial, subject to the conditions of annexation approval based on the findings of facts in the staff report, instead of public hearing for January 27th, 2025. We will note that that is at 3,300 Grazer Drive. We have another motion to adopt a resolution of intention related to 2812 and 2816 South Third Street West, which is to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Missoula parcel of land described as Lot B of plural addition located in Lot 2, Coben and Dinsmore's Orchard Homes, Edition Number 1, Section 19, Township 13 North Range 19 West, PMM, Missoula County, Missoula, Montana, as shown on Exhibit A and Zone Lot B, B1-1 Neighborhood Business, subject to the conditions of annexation approval based on the findings affecting the staff report, instead of public hearing also for January 27th, 2025. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you very much. All right. Any public comment tonight? No? Not seeing any in the room. And then how about online? Okay, not seeing, seeing any online either. Then we'll go ahead and take a voice vote for the consent agenda, please.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Right, that passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. That wraps up our consent agenda. As mentioned, we don't have any items under regular business. I will point folks to the Missoula City Council meeting schedule for 2025. It's under 9.2B on the agenda this evening. And with that, that wraps up all of our regular business. We'll now move on to public comment on non-agenda items.
Robert Dunlop, 2316 West Kent Avenue here in Missoula. Several meetings ago, residents that either live on Eaton or near Eaton came here with three observations. One, the cost of sidewalks. Two, the intersection of North and Eaton. And then the traffic speed on Eaton. Since that meeting, I came here a couple of times and wanted to say thank you, but you had too much other business, so I kept quiet. So after that meeting, within two weeks, we had a stop sign put up there. We also had one of those digital signs that tell people how fast they're going. And while I can't speak for my neighbors, I do live near Eaton, I can tell you the traffic has slowed down. I wish we could keep that digital sign a little longer. The four-way stop is vast improvement. I didn't think government could work that fast, but it did. And I see you're working on the sidewalks, so this is my belated thanks to you and to your mobility department for getting that done.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. Very grateful for that recognition. Thank you. All right. Not seeing any other members of the public in the audience. How about online? Is there any members of the public that wish to make comments on items not on the agenda? Okay. Well, we're not seeing any, then that wraps up our public comment on non-agenda items. And communications from the mayor, I don't really have. I don't have much. You know, it's, it's welcome to 2025. It's going to be a great year. We're going to continue to do good work together. Thanks again for the positive public comment. It's always nice to hear that from members of the public. We have a, a team that works real hard and, and the city council that's real dedicated to that. So we're going to continue to do the good work. With that, I'll pass it to council members for their comments, starting with Counselor Jordan in the room.
Thanks, I'll pass.
Okay. And Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pass as well.
Okay. And Counselor Nugent?
Happy New Year, I'll pass.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, I'll pass as well.
Okay. All right. Counselor Becerra?
Pass as well.
Counselor Farmer?
Thank you, I'll also pass.
All right. How about you, Counselor Anderson?
Okay, well, I won't pass. I just have a couple of comments to make, since I haven't spoken tonight. And so, well, I just, apologies for being late. I was actually at the Capitol today for the start of the new legislative, the 69th legislative session. And so thanks to everyone in the Missoula delegation for serving and uprooting their lives for four months and moving to Helena. There's lots of pomp and circumstance and all of that, but there's a lot of work to be done in the next 90 days. And it's just, it's interesting to see how their chamber works versus ours. Having witnessed several legislative sessions over my course of also being on council, and we are definitely the body that is the most accessible to the community, and occasionally we can be quick on our feet when needed. And that isn't always the case with the legislature. But I just, I felt like it was an interesting intersection that today is January 6th. It's also the start of the Montana legislative session, and I just, I thought Mr. Campbell would do it. But I want to acknowledge that this day, four years ago, on the assault on the Capitol, there was over 140 police officers who were assaulted and injured. And I think that that needs to be acknowledged, and we need to continue to thank our first responders and our police officers and peace officers for their service. And five of them died as a result of that. And I think that we should not forget those sacrifices, especially as we meet today and the legislative session starts today and votes were ratified. It seems to all culminate, and I didn't want today to go by without. today to go by without acknowledging those officers and their families and the sacrifices that those folks make. I thought it was really poignant that Minority Leader Sullivan, in her speech to the floor today, said that our democracy depends on the ability to debate, disagree, and compromise, and put the people's interests above our own. And I think that that's a noble endeavor. I think often we are able to do that here in this body. I hope that the legislature is able to do that as well. And I just, I felt like those were good grounding words to start off the 2025 year for all of us. And thank you all for your service here around this horseshoe and for all the people who serve the community of Missoula in various capacities. It takes all of us playing our part to make our community work. And I'm grateful for all of you playing yours. Thanks.
Very well said. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Carlino?
I'll pass.
Okay. And Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, just a quick note of appreciation for our outgoing president and his elevating conservation and collaboration with two tribal nations in California. Our nation just got two new national monuments today, Chuckwalla and I can't pronounce the next one, but it's like Sititla or something like that. And then also over the weekend, Biden signed the Explore Act, which is one of the largest recreation and conservation packages this nation has ever seen. So kudos to that. Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. And how about folks online? Any council comment this evening?
I'll pass, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Vasika, Counselor Jones, both pass? Okay. All right, folks. Well, then that does wrap up our meeting. And we are adjourned at 7:14 PM. Thank you very much. All right, you bet. Thanks for sticking around. Awesome.